Everyone's ready? All right. This is zoning board of adjustment meeting for Tuesday, April the ninth, 2024, and it is 1:30 PM. And we have a quorum. Quorum is established and present. And that was item number one. Item number two, review and take any action related to the minute records of the regular meeting held on Monday, March fourth, 2023. Does anyone have any questions on the minutes? And if not, I need a motion.
Do we need to change the very last where it says our next meeting would be last Monday? Or?
Yes, we can update that.
Okay.
If you would just put that in your motion.
If that, with that update, then I would move that they be accepted.
Second. Motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved with the change of date. Item number three, ZBA twenty-four dash zero eight, thirty-three thirty-eight Cornell Avenue, single member district number five, Karen Hesse Smith. Request for approval of variance from zoning ordinance section five oh one point eight for sixteen-foot rear set-back yard in lieu of the required twenty feet for a new carport structure within the RS one zoning district located at thirty-three thirty-eight Cornell Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Austin Reed Planner. So this comes out of the ASU College Hills neighborhood, district five, Karen Hesse Smith's district. We are in RS one, single family residential zoning. As mentioned, working for a sixteen-foot rear yard setback here in lieu of the required twenty feet for a new carport. We mailed out twenty-five notifications, received one in favor, did not receive any in opposition. I'm kind of on to our analysis. That twenty-foot rear setback is actually being measured from the center of the alleyway here, as can be done with carports in the rear. And that'll go to the nearest vertical structure, which in this case is most likely a carport post. Without a variance on the slot in the rear, there's room for about a twenty-foot-long carport, give or take, and that's before accounting for the overhang. We don't think that granting a variance will have an adverse effect on any of the surrounding properties, but at the same time, we weren't really able to find any extenuating circumstances that could justify variance. Here's kind of a site plan to help you visualize. You can see the carport, the dimensions there are eighteen by twenty-five feet, and that twenty-foot rear setback is probably measured from somewhere around there to somewhere around there. I will say, I think this is probably a slightly outdated survey because I think there's a garage addition or something else added to the home up there. As I mentioned, though, we couldn't really find the extenuating circumstances to grant a variance. And with that, we are recommending denial, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Reed?
I have one, just to kind of figure out how this works, but if nobody's against it and the person wants to do it, why wouldn't you just say yes?
Ordinance, simply put.
But does that make, the ordinance right?
And that's your discretion.
I mean, if none of the neighbors, if none of the neighbors care, that'd seem to be the only thing to me. Why would, I don't.
Yeah, and that's worth discussing.
And again, you can explain to me how this works, but it seems unnecessarily punitive.
And it, it's up to you, so.
The, well, the ordinance was adopted by city council. And so when that's adopted and those six criteria that we have to meet that are in the staff report, if we don't meet those, then we as staff cannot recommend approval. Again, as Austin is mentioning, that it is up to discretion of the board. This is a quasi-judicial board, and so if something is appealed from here, it goes, actually goes to a district court. And so these are actually very, very specific ordinance laws that we have to meet or not meet.
Good question. Any more questions for Mr. Reed? None? Any none? Want to open for public comment?
Are we about to call in the names?
Yes, step up and state your name.
Hello, everybody, Justin Elkins. I would be the general contractor on this, on Leeway Properties.
Welcome.
Thank you. This is actually my first time to go through this also. Can we bring back up that picture? Is that just a back arrow?
Yeah, it should be.
Okay, so. I don't know where this happened. It's not the back property line that we're trying to mess with. It's the side property line. The side property line is the problem. And the reason that we're asking for the variance is because there's a water well dead center in the property. And for us to move that house where the, the water well is out of the way, we would have scooped the, the house forward a total of forty feet.
Sir, are you talking about the carport project or the house out on Country Club Road?
Am I on the wrong one? I'm sorry.
I'm not on the wrong one.
We don't have that one next, though.
You're one ahead.
So, my apologies.
I was looking at that and I was like, this is dumb.
Good practice, Mr. Elkins. Come on back next time. Come on back when you state your line. Yeah, it's all right. It's all right. Okay, we'll close, uh, public comments still open. Anybody want to? Yeah. This is thirty-three thirty-eight Cornell.
Yes, sir. My name is Byron. I'm, I am the applicant. May I pass out some information? I, I got an email from Mr. Reed. Letting us know that he would be not in favor of it. Because he didn't see any extenuating circumstances.
Byron, can I stop? Did you say your last name?
Beal.
Beal, Byron Beal, okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Go ahead. You can pass out anything you'd like, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Very nervous today. This is not, this is not what I do.
Yes, sir. I understand. We don't buy it.
Okay, great.
Okay, you want to go over this with us?
Sure. So, so today I'm here to defend the request. If you look on page two and three, there's my responses.
Two and three.
Along with Mr. Reed's comments.
Okay. All right.
If you'd just like to look over them. I'm a terrible reader.
Let's see.
So basically, you have the one-car garage and you want to have a carport somewhere.
And you can't put it in the front?
That's correct. I mean, our neighborhood doesn't allow forward-facing carports because there's not room for the setback.
Right.
How long is that, twenty-five?
Yes, sir, twenty-five foot. My pickup is twenty-one foot, five inches, six inches long. I'm sorry.
Okay.
So that would give me twenty inches of roughly clearance of cover front and back.
Sure. Is that a carport? Carport, okay.
Yes, sir.
And twenty-two, and how far have they encroached, Mr. Reed?
We're asking for a four-foot variance, you're going from twenty feet to the sixteen.
That's on the support post.
So, twenty feet to the.
According to those measurements, if you, I should probably talk to this. According to this measurements, if you cut that down to twenty-one feet, it'd be fine.
Where's your post going to be?
Poster two foot back. You're only allowed a two-foot overhang on your post unless you have an engineered drawing.
Poster two foot back from, back here?
From the back corner. So that, so I'm, yes, sir.
Get it down to twenty-three.
So, so my, my poster setback two foot off of this structure. Got a two-foot overhang forward and a two-foot overhang at the rear.
They don't count the overhang. We just go with the post, so.
That's correct. So that would be six foot, not four foot. So I'm asking for an additional four feet. I'm asking for a four-foot forgiveness from the center of the alley. Instead of twenty feet, I'm asking for the sixteen feet that I have.
Okay. So you've got twenty-five, you're showing twenty-five now on the slab. You're going to set the post back.
Two feet, yes, sir.
That'd be twenty-three. And the two-foot overhang would give you twenty-five.
That's correct. That's correct, yes.
And you want, and what?
So I'm not asking to move the, the cover just for you to honor, honor it as it's drawn there. It's still in my backyard. If you, if you guys would turn over, I've got some photos from, the aerial photo that Mr. Reed sent out to me, I'm sure he sent it to you guys as well. So on, on my street, the adjacent street that joins by the alley is Trinity Street. And there's three addresses that have structure that do not comply with what the zones are. There's zero lot line. That's one of them. That's the first one in question. It's, it's not the question. It's just I want you guys to realize that what I'm asking for is not out of line what's in my neighborhood already.
Is this on your alley also?
Yeah, it's two houses from my house, north.
Okay. That's right on the property line, isn't it?
It actually hangs over if you, if you look at it closely. And then the next one, it's a blue, it's a blue structure. That home is, is catty corner across from me, so it's, it's very close. The address is written. Thirty-three nineteen Trinity.
Did they get permits on it? What are you showing?
We wouldn't be able to get that information in this meeting if they have permits or not. It's something we can certainly look into as an enforcement. If there's not permits and if they do not receive variances, then they'd be out of compliance and they'd be subject to code enforcement.
So I can tell you that these two structures, the first two that you look at, they've been there for plus forty years. My parents owned the home where I'm living now since seventy-nine. So those structures were there since seventy-nine. The, the third structure is thirty-three oh one Trinity. It's the furthest one from me, but I can see it from my dining room table, sitting at my table, eating dinner. I can look at this building and it is a metal building. It's a garage. It's not a carport. And it's less than five feet. I, I went and measured all these properties. So I'm not complaining about these properties. I just want you to make, I just want you to be aware that there are other properties that have more than what I'm asking for. I, I just, I would not be, I don't think it's unreasonable.
Yeah, if they didn't, they need permits and they're, they're non-conforming, that's the issue on that.
Sure. I understand that.
And I just want to help you all understand some of those images and even from the overhead images. So there's two things at play here. And if you look at the image on the screen, his carport is directly adjacent to his home, less than ten feet from the home. Therefore, under the ordinance, it's looked at as a continuation of the home structure as a principal structure. If that structure was ten feet away, it would be looked at as an accessory structure and then would have a different rear yard setback. It would not have the twenty-foot setback. Only principal structures have the rear yard setback where accessory structures have a much smaller, usually a two-foot setback. Now, I'm not sure that any of these comply with that necessarily of the images that he's showing, but I just want y'all to understand the difference between those two things. Had this been, unfortunately, he already has a shed there toward the, what I'm going to say is to, to the south. That may not be true south, but he's already got a shed there. Had that carport been able to go there, he'd be able to be right very close to the alleyway because he's more than ten feet from the home.
Technical, technical. So if the, if the carport that he's wanting was ten feet away from the house, he'd be okay? Basically, is that what you?
Correct. And that's the challenge, just based on the shape of the house, you've got that piece that juts out from the house, so that pushes that carport into that rear yard setback for a primary structure.
So if he pulled it up from there to there, would that give you ten feet?
It's very possible. I mean, it doesn't.
If I put it where?
If you pulled it up in your property line, would that give you ten feet from the back to your house?
No, sir. There's not enough room there. I mean, I mean, if you go from the, my alley to the back wall of my dining room, it's, it's thirty feet and some inches.
And you're wanting twenty-five?
So, so I'm, I'm inside my backyard, six feet to the post right now.
Six feet to the.
And I'm, I'm roughly sixteen inches from my home. I'm just past the overhang of my home for this structure to go up.
Okay, so you're six feet back from your property line?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Reed, tell me again what he needs to be in compliance?
He's asking for a four-foot variance.
Yeah.
So, can, I guess, can you restate?
Off the, so it'd be twenty?
Twenty feet from the center of the alleyway is probably going to come out to, from the property line. I think it's a fifteen-foot alleyway.
It measures eighteen feet.
Eighteen feet in the alleyway?
So it measures eighteen foot fence to fence on the alley. So roughly nine foot of that would be my portion. So if my post were set back four more feet, if I had an engineered drawing that said my overhang could be six feet, I would be in compliance.
Correct.
Okay, six feet. Okay, now you're, you need six feet.
Then I wouldn't need a variance.
Correct.
But I thought this was the most inexpensive way to approach this was to come and talk to you guys and, and try to.
Yeah.
Try to accommodate this way.
Yeah, not knowing what your neighbors have done, uh, kind of mutes that point a little bit.
I just wanted you guys to know that if you would accept our request, that it's not out of line to what is in my neighborhood. That's all. That's, that's the only reason for the photos. I'm not bashing them. I don't want them to have their stuff tore down. I mean, I'm not that kind of person. I just, I just want you to see that if you accepted my variance request, that it, it's, it falls in line with what's in my neighborhood. Whether it was a, whether it was.
If your post is two foot back, is that twenty-five with the post?
No, sir. Twenty-five is the total structure. Two-foot overhang, that makes it twenty-three feet to the post.
Okay, twenty-three. So twenty-one's the magic number for the post.
So it'd have to be four foot from the two foot that's there. So it wouldn't be a total of six foot. So it'd be nineteen foot would be the overhang. I'm sorry, nineteen foot would be the number you're looking at. It would still be a twenty-five-foot carport. I would just have a six-foot overhang instead of a two-foot overhang.
Is that the math? Twenty-five?
That's the math if we get a, if we don't do a variance. I mean, you're, you're asking me the numbers.
I know, you're going to set the post back two feet already. That leaves twenty-three, and we need twenty-one?
So if you're going to do four foot, though, we need four foot. So he's going to do, instead of the twenty-three foot, he's going to do it at nineteen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's not what I'm coming up with.
But with that, I would have to have an engineered drawing to have six foot of overhang. Does that, does that make sense?
Or cut, or cut your overhang back to two foot.
Right, and then I only have a twenty-one foot cover, which is not adequate for what I have, no.
You want it to be able to cover your vehicle.
Right. I, I, I'm not, I'm not able to purchase a brand-new vehicle. I've been blessed from God to, to be able to have a brand-new vehicle. Without a payment, and I want to take care of it. I don't, I don't, I get up in the middle of the night and I drive to the nearest car wash or the bridge or wherever I can go to get cover. I'm self-employed. If I've already had to rent a vehicle one time for this new pickup to be worked on, I cannot tow a trailer. I'm, I'm a welder, mold business. I can't tow my equipment behind a rental. So, so the hardship is not a visible hardship. The hardship is all on me and my family to, to get out, to get up in the middle of the night, put clothes on and hurry to someplace that hopefully somebody else is not in your spot that you've picked out in advance. So that's the reason the variance.
Your important slab?
No, sir, we have not moved forward on anything.
Do you think that's feasible to do your post in that extra four feet?
Yes, ma'am, the structure is strong enough to support probably a ten-foot overhang.
Okay.
But there again, I'm going to have to go get an engineer, which, which I'm, I'm okay with that if I have to. I've already reached out and I have a name for a guy at ESK Engineering. I'll take my drawings there if I can't move forward here.
Sure.
I just would like to, I would like for it to be approved here, is what I would like.
Right.
So why wouldn't we just approve this?
Well, if you look at, I'm sorry, apologize. If you look at the report, the code says that per section two oh seven F, the zoning ordinance, the zoning board of adjustment must affirmatively find that each of the following circumstances apply. So if you are to grant the variance, you must find a reason for each one of those six criteria that he meets those six criteria.
So I've responded to each of those six. I applied for this while I was driving down the highway. My wife was trying to do all this on her cellphone because we got a phone call at four forty saying we would have to apply for a variance and we only had twenty minutes to get this application done. So we may have filled out some parts of it wrong. I do not know, but I have responded to what Mr. Reed has, has written down from one through six, and I feel like I'm adequately covered on one through six as well as number one on page three.
So you're saying we don't, there's a set of rules that says we don't have a latitude to just make a decision based on the facts before us we've got to follow a, a set of rules in addition to set of rules he has to follow? So it's pretty hard to get around this, it looks like.
Correct. There has to be very much of a hardship for a reason for a variance to where everyone else in the community is supposed to follow the same rules.
Person, personally, it's a hardship to get up in the middle of the night, to have to go move a car because of the weather we have here, whether it's the wind, hail, whatever. I consider that a hardship.
And these alleys aren't used for disposal or?
No, sir, everything's moved to the front of the home.
Just utilities?
Correct.
Sewer lines, are they in, do we have?
I think there is sewer mains in the alleyway.
Sewer and gas.
And then overhead AEP.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. But no other, no other traffic.
No other traffic.
Just civilian, just citizen traffic.
And they've recently paved our alley. Just, it was one of those chosen. I asked why it was being done and they said that the city just chose random alleys to pave, and so our alley is paved now, and that's even better a reason to.
That's nice.
To, to try to move things to the back.
Need to come pave my alley.
So in order to move this along, I would say that given the fact that no neighbors are against it and that we're talking about an alley structure, the whole request seems reasonable, particularly given the fact that if he goes and pays to have an engineered plan, it's fine anyway. So that would tell me that we've just got overlapping rules. So I would move that we give in the variance.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
I gotta sit up, are we through discussing? We're through discussing. With any more questions? Don?
Thank you, Don.
Okay.
I'll second the emotion.
We'll, we're not, oh, that closed public comment. All right, Mr. Beal, let.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'm going to close the public comment, and I think we've already had the board comment. So I'm going to call for a board comment. We have a board comment. I'm going to call for a motion.
Already did, right?
Yeah, yeah.
To grant a variance.
Is there enough?
Is that enough?
Do y'all need a specific, whatever there for the minutes to?
No, I, I think that's an adequate motion.
Okay.
And then there's a second.
There's, there's a motion to approve the variance. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Would be a none? Mr. Beal, good luck.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
All right, let's see, where are we at here? That was item number one. Item number three, I mean. Item number four, ZBA twenty-four dash zero nine, seventy-six ninety-eight South Country Club Road, single member district number one, Tommy Hebert. A request for approval of a variance from zoning ordinance section five oh one point A for an eight-foot side yard setback in lieu of the required fifteen feet for the garage portion of a new build in the R and E zoning district at seventy-six ninety-eight South Country Club Road. Mr. Reed?
Thank you, Austin Reed Planner. So this one comes out of the Nazareth neighborhood, district one, Tommy Hebert's district. We're a few hundred feet off of Nazareth there. As you can see, it's R and E Ranch and Estate zoning. And as you mentioned, we're looking for an eight-foot side yard setback because our, our side setbacks in R and E are fifteen feet. We mailed out nine notifications. We'd get one in favor and two in opposition. Onto our analysis, this is actually kind of a narrow lot for R and E and for the area minimum. With requirements for an R and E lot is a hundred fifty feet, while this one's sitting at a hundred. Additionally, the, the fifteen-foot side setback is something that no one else really in the area has had to abide by that I've seen. There are, there is also a water well. It's, it's kind of awkwardly placed in the middle of the lot, and you'll see what I mean with the site plan on the next slide. And finally, we don't think that granting this variance would have an adverse effect on any of the surrounding properties. Okay, this is pretty hard to see. So up here is that water well. It, it kind of makes things awkward to where it would end up in the middle of the driveway or the, it's actually the garage right there, and that's the only part that juts out into that side setback. This is where that variance is. As I mentioned, we think that all the necessary criteria in granting a variance can be met and that it is in fact the minimum action that will make use of the land, not contrary to public interest and would carry out the spirit of the zoning ordinance. With that, we're recommending approval. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So it's only the driveway and the garage that jut out in that area?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Any questions, Mr. Reed? Public comment? Open public comment?
Don't do that again.
Okay. That's all right. You don't want to get up and talk about it, huh?
It's all right, don't worry.
Okay, all right. Any more public, any more public comment? None, I'm going to close public comment.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
There's a motion to approve, second?
Second.
Motion and a second? Go for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Pass this.
Thank you all.
Uh-huh. Item number five, ZBA twenty-four dash ten, fifteen twenty-eight Kenwood Drive, uh, single member district number five, Karen Hesse Smith. Request for approval of variance from section four oh six point four to allow for a short-term, short-term rental property within four hundred and eighty, four hundred and eighty-four feet, oh my goodness, of another, in lieu of the required five hundred feet in the Santa Rita neighborhood.
Hi, Sherri.
Ms. Bailey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Sherri Bailey, principal planner. As you indicated, this is at fifteen twenty-eight Kenwood Drive. They have requested to become a short-term rental. The problem is that our ordinance requires five hundred-foot separation. They are at four hundred and eighty-four feet. That's sixteen feet off of the five hundred feet. So they have, are asking for a variance in this case of sixteen feet. We sent out twenty-four notifications. We did receive, just received one in opposition. We still haven't received any in favor. The opposition is located down here at sixteen oh seven, and the applicant is at fifteen twenty-eight. They did not list the reason for their opposition. They just checked the box. or structure for this application, and we did not feel that there was anything that fit that circumstance. Staff does believe that the special category does not pertain in this particular request. The 500 feet is pretty exact, and we do know that the council is pretty strong on that 500 feet. And so we believe that granting the variance will not have any adverse effects on the surrounding property, but we do agree that we can't make that assumption. We have not had much of a chance to review that. Staff believes that all of the circumstances by which the request must be measured cannot be met, and therefore, we are recommending that the request be denied. And with that, are there any questions?
Does this go to planning next?
Yes, if you grant the request, it will go to planning with your approving a variance. If you do not approve the variance, it will not.
Any questions, Ms. Bailey?
Has all this come before the city council yet to figure out whether we're changing any of this?
We actually have a joint meeting scheduled on the 16th of April with Planning Commission and City Council. The current ordinance does not change that 500 feet. We don't anticipate that council or Planning Commission has the appetite to change that, but there's always a chance that they will change that. That is up to them. But right now, it's not written that way, but they could always change that at that time.
And what's the magic in 500 feet?
There was a committee back in, I want to say 2016, that was put together for short-term rentals that brought an ordinance forward in 2017, and that is just what the committee decided at that time, and that's what's in our ordinance.
Is that standard? Do other cities have similar policy or?
There are cities all over the state that have no requirements, all the way up to very, very restrictive.
Looking at that map, they're not even the same neighborhood. They're full, two blocks apart. Like, I assume this is noise-related, and that just seems, you know, there's no way that one house is going to bother the other one.
I think several cities are looking at what are ways to limit the volume. This was one way to limit the volume that could be in any particular area, as opposed to some cities do a percentage of a neighborhood, but then you could have three properties next door to each other that are all short-term rentals. This is just what our, at the time in 2017, our city council chose that number.
Thank you.
Has there been any headway as far as changing the way it is that all renewals happen at the same time? I mean, what if all of a sudden, they don't renew in May? And this person doesn't get to do it because in April, there is a house there, but in May, they don't renew?
That is part of our proposal
Okay.
In the ordinance, that we would move to a once-a-year
Yes.
registration. So people could still apply throughout the year if they're brand-new and get on, and become a short-term rental, but then everybody would renew at the same time.
Yes.
Because that is a nightmare, not only for operators, but for staff as well, is trying to figure who came first. And so we're trying to create a process that would do that. We just don't have that process at this time.
And does this group, this comes before this group a lot, this subject, right?
Yeah.
So do you guys think or not think that short-term rentals are an asset for the community?
Whether they're paying for the board, I don't know.
But that's a different issue. Like, from my view, they would typically be better kept, you know, nicer houses, like, that's a house that would, could use a facelift. Seems like there's a real positive to it, in my view.
I think there is.
There is. There's some other things going on. People paying the hot taxes and things like that, but if everything's, if people are doing what they're supposed to do, they're okay. But it turns it into kind of a commercial situation in residential neighborhoods. So they have a number, 500. I'm sitting here thinking, maybe they'll have 500 or within 5% or something. I don't know. I mean, that number's just so hard. It's a hard number.
Well, that becomes a question, and I mean, 500 is the number. And do we, what, the next guy comes in with 498.6? And what are we going to say? I mean, I don't mean to be hard about it, but 500 is 500 is 500.
But that's an arbitrary rule somebody made up in 2016. When short-term rentals were new. I remember the panic, then. Everybody at the lake was like, oh my God, there's going to be a party every night, and that's not how it shakes out.
It's not up to us to change it.
No. So what happens is, if the ones that we have approved here do go to the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission kills them.
Kills it?
Kills it.
So you're saying it almost doesn't matter what we do?
500 feet, they have the last say before it goes to City Council.
Yeah, they have a second step that's called the conditional use, that they have to obtain at Planning Commission.
Yeah.
So if we approve it, it goes to the planning, if we don't, it stops here.
So ours, I mean, we can approve the variance, but then it does go for that special use permit. And there have, in the past, have been very close sticklers to the 500 feet separation.
Well, they're making the rules now, right?
Correct.
Good questions. Thank you, Sherry. Any more questions for Sherry?
Okay.
All right, I'm going to open for public comment. Yes, sir. State your name.
My name's Doug Robinson.
Doug.
Live at 15, or 1215 Kenwood. Thank you, sir. Not a lot. That's just a letter from the neighbor that's right next to it. So, I mean, the person that's going to be affected most is going to be the guy right next to it. It's a corner house, there's not going to be anything affected to it, next to it. I understand, 500 feet, I get it. All six of y'all, y'all get on that, that software and put it down. So far, just in this, we've got 483, we've got 489, it's 486, I mean, and really 16 feet? I mean, that, you know, I don't know. But, and it's, and it's all just depends on how you drop the pin. But, you know, I've seen other ones that come before the ZBA that didn't do things right, that are 200 feet from a house that's on the lake that, where everybody's having a fit about. And I've been doing this a little bit over a year, and over that year, the people of San Angelo have really accept the lake. I mean, if we, if there was a big problem with this, there would be people here, like I've seen at the Planning Commission, opposing it, but there's not anybody here. And I understand the 500 rule, but if that's the case, if we're going to be held to that, and right now, with the Planning Commission, they're trying to cut you all out, which is the worst thing ever. I mean, why have a ZBA if we can't bring variances to y'all to try to get it done? But anyway.
You mean not be off a job?
Yes, that's right.
A non-paying job?
Exactly. You wouldn't be able to get a hearing, me, Gary. But, you know, y'all know, y'all have seen me here, I don't know how many times. And so, you know, my presence should show that I take this seriously. This isn't a hobby, this is a business, and
So you have more than one?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and I'm, and by the way, I'm up on all of my hot taxes.
Good.
Not just up on my hot taxes, I'm a month ahead of my hot taxes.
Good for you.
Okay? So I'm doing, I'm trying to do things right, just trying to get this one. The reason that I like this one so well is it's right down the street from me. I mean, it's less than a thousand, or it's right over 1,000 feet from where I live.
I see.
And this house also had a warehouse in the back of it, which I liked a lot. But I can be there in less than a minute. I'm going to be driving past there to see if people are partying or see if we're going to have problems, because I live in the neighborhood. The other house that's, that's too close, the South Park House, that's my house as well.
Oh, is it?
So, but, and
You're competing against yourself.
Yeah, exactly, I know, yeah. But you dropped that pin, Gary, and I guarantee you, you may get 510, 525.
Oh, I know.
You know? But none of the neighbors, all the neighbors around there are very friendly. They all know what I'm trying to do. We had the house for a while, we were trying to make it a midterm rental. It just, it just doesn't work, you know, it just doesn't work. I'm keeping it clean. Any of our houses, you'll see, they're nicely cleaned and all that. And I know y'all are done with the 500 feet. Aaron, I read the ordinance, it's on the back of that. Now, on that ordinance, does it tell you where to measure from?
No.
No?
I don't think so.
So if you took my South Park House, that's in 500 feet with this one, and you didn't put it right around that one, you put it on the bottom, and you did there, I'm more than 500 feet. Now, let's don't do it, that one. Let's put the South Park House, the same that one, and then put it at the top of the other one. Guess what? I'm still within 500 feet. So are y'all going to grant? I mean, I don't even know why I'm here. I shouldn't even have to have the variance.
I was sitting there looking, wanted to measure to the middle between the pins, and it'd be over 500 feet, wouldn't it?
Yeah, and they're trying to make it to where they're doing it from the close spot. But it also doesn't say as the crows fly either. Maybe that's something that's supposed to be there, put it in your ordinance. That's what I say, you know?
In our standard definitions, in our standard practice of measuring, it's always property, nearest property line to nearest property line. We do that for TABC licenses, we do that for all kinds of things. That's just a standard that we have.
TABC license?
It will be in the new ordinance as proposed, is, it'll be the closest two points of the two properties.
Okay.
TABC, I thought TABC was door-to-door. No?
Not in San Angelo. In other cities it is, but in San Angelo, it's the same, property line to property line.
So anyway, that's what I'm, I'm asking for a variance. I mean, I'm paying all my hot taxes, I'm doing things right. I'm asking, depending on who you ask, 16, maybe 10, maybe 11, we don't know. I mean, feet, and literally, if we did it, and it's to the next house, I'm still good. So that's all I'm asking. I mean, at least, just, just let, just pass it up to the Planning Commission to where they have to decide on it. Go from there. But thanks.
Have you been, have you been working with the Planning Commission on the new ordinance?
Yes, yes, I'm trying to get that all worked out to where, the whole problem is the lake. I mean, you don't see, I mean, when people have come to renew, you're not seeing anybody coming up saying, hey, man, we got, there, and what I'm trying to do is get them to listen to staff, because y'all guys hear it, the Planning Commission hears it, but the City Council, they don't hear it. They hear just a little bit of it. Well, y'all live with it for a little bit every month, and the Planning Commission lives with it for a little bit every month. They live with it every day, and that's the reason they're sending them to conferences and all this, to figure out what are these other places doing. And just in the year, year and a half or whatever that I've been doing it, it is, it was amazing, when I first started in it, that's when the lake problem came up. But now, I mean, we've got, I've got, I just finished one on Catalina, and I've had neighbors come by there and go, hey, when can we get it in? Because I've got family that are coming, and we want them to stay in the neighborhood because I don't have enough room at my house. So let me, we want to, we want to get it now. Can we book it early before you put it on Airbnb? You know, I mean, it's just, and, you know, the bad thing about what they're trying to do with 500 feet, there's a kid that's, I don't know, he's probably early 30s or something, and he's trying to do some houses over there on, in Port Concho area. He's got the best house in the neighborhood. Well, he wants to do a bunch of others, but guess what? He can't do them because of the 500 feet. And wouldn't that, I mean, I can understand why they don't, why we want the 500 feet somewhat. Back in the old days when we were around, the kids played outside and everybody knew their neighbor. Everybody's on the computer now. So you don't know your neighbor like you used to, you know? So, but, that's my two cents.
Well, I'm glad you're working with the Planning Commission, I'm sure.
I'm trying.
Thank you. Thank you. I promise. All right, there'll be no more public to comment on this. I'm going to close public comment and open it up for board comment.
I move we approve the variance.
Any comments you want to talk?
No, I second it.
Why haven't called for it yet?
The fact that he owns both of them.
Gary's trying to earn his paycheck today.
Oh, okay, all right. So we're going to close board comment, we're going to open up.
To me, the fact that he owns both of those, it's a no-brainer. Yeah, it's a no-brainer.
I'm glad I don't have to make the motion. Okay. All right, we're going to have, okay, closing board comment, we're going to, I'm going to ask for a motion. Go ahead.
I move we approve the variance.
And I still second it.
All right, we got a motion to approve a variance, got a second. I'm going to take it to the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Good luck with planning. Uh-huh. You did. All right, moving on, division report. Item number six.
Well, good afternoon. Aaron Vanoy, Director of Planning Development Services.
Welcome, Aaron.
So we do have, remember the carport area north of Edmund and 29th? So we did get the overlay approved through City Council, so now those, now those properties can have carports. We have gone through and found a number of permits that either have been previously approved, or they were previously, pre-1995, so they're allowed. And so we're down to eight carports.
Eight?
Eight, total. And so we are sending a letter to them to come and visit with us, and see what we can do to work with them to get their building permit, and see if they, a number of those are actually going to meet the zoning ordinance. Now that they have the overlay, there may be three or so that may have to come and request a variance for a front yard setback or something of that nature. But those should be moving forward here very soon. The majority of that neighborhood was very happy about the open structure overlay that allows them to have carports in the front. I do think that maybe in the future, that's a discussion even with our first case of carports or open structures like that. Do they need to meet, whether it's a rear yard setback, or are they allowed in front yards throughout other areas? Do we do something with our zoning that maybe allow them in more areas or not? And I think that's just for discussion, because what types of cases keep coming here? Because the idea is that you have ordinances that, okay, the cases don't have to come here, that they're able to be able to be worked through. And we see carports all the time. Of course, we've been seeing short-term rentals too, but I think that is something as y'all discuss with whoever may be appointed, you or with your circles of people of finding out, do we need to give staff some direction of, we need to look at this as a, as a broader thing? And it's just something to think about as we look forward to, to things that come, particularly that come to this board.
Well, the argument being, I would think that fellow that was up earlier, Mr. Beal, that alleys aren't used for trash pickup anymore.
And I would agree.
The trash cans out there.
And that, that may have been the very reason why there's a 20-foot yard setback, but then you have so many neighborhoods that don't have alleys.
Yeah.
Of course, you're not going to put a carport back there usually, but
Yeah, I think it was fire code, wasn't it?
No, it was not fire code.
Okay.
It's purely zoning code. And it's really to give family separation
Right.
in their backyards.
Right.
But families don't use their backyards like they used to. I remember growing up in the 80s, that was a completely different timeframe.
Mm-hmm.
So I think it's a good discussion to have, and what do we do? I mean, our, we need to make rules that work for our community.
So can we give you direction?
Sure, if y'all have some, I'd be happy to start looking into things and seeing if there's some, something that y'all have for me to look at.
Do you need areas, or can we do it as a whole?
The whole city? I don't know, I'm asking.
I, well, what's, is it in reference to carports or open structures?
Yeah, I think carports and open structures are still going to be ongoing all over town because they're needed, just like this gentleman that has the one-car garage, and, you know, you want to protect your asset that you have.
And ideally, they were, they were set up in the open structure overlay for those that didn't have garages or just had a one-car garage. And so I'm sure there are parts of towns that are missed from that, and I know we've seen a few that have come in from the lake because that was annexed later on.
Right.
I mean, a lot of existing homes there. And so if you think it's a broader thing to look at, we can start broad, and if we need to dial in, then we dial in.
I mean, that was in College Hills, you know, so that's an older area
Correct.
that's not available to do that.
Put some thought to it.
You're going to think about it? Okay. Gary's going to think about it.
Yeah.
I'm going to copy what you say, anyway.
The concern I have is finding people who are just contractors going by throwing them up, who don't come get permits, who we don't know anything about.
Well, what's, is it in reference to carports or open structures?
Yeah, I think carports and open structures are still gonna be ongoing all over town because they're needed, just like this gentleman that has the one-car garage and, you know, you want to protect your asset that you have.
And ideally, they were, they were set up in the open structure overlay for those that didn't have garages or just had a one-car garage. And so I'm sure there are parts of towns that are missed from that. And I know we've seen a few that have come in from the lake because that was annexed later on.
Right.
I mean, a lot of exa, existing homes there. And so if you think it's a broader thing to look at, we can start broad and if we need to dial in, then we dial in.
I mean, that was in College Hills, you know, so that's an older area
Correct.
that's not available to do that.
Put some thought to it.
You're gonna think about it? Okay. Gary's gonna think about it.
Yeah.
I'm gonna copy what you say anyway.
The concern I have is finding people who are just contractors going by throwing them up, who don't come get permits who we don't know anything about. And I hate punishing the homeowner because you don't know what you don't know. Correct. And I, I don't, I don't have a solution. Which is what we ran into with that Catalina area.
I agree.
Yep. That's, you know, I don't know how to solve that, but to a certain degree, we, I think we have to give grace, but we don't need everybody coming in here going, oh, I didn't know.
That's correct. Well, I, I said it at city council and I'll say it here. Anyone that builds a carport needs a permit. Please come to the city. We're not here to make it very, very difficult. We want to work with you. We, we want, we want you to do it right so that in five years you sell your house and that new owner then doesn't know what to do because they may be stuck with something that they can't deal with. So we just, just know, please come and get a permit. That's where it, that's where it starts, to come and get a permit. But yes, we will be happy to look at the open structure overlay, look at that area or that, that ordinance about accessory dwellings and open structures and how they're looked at for things. So, yeah, we're happy to do that.
I wonder if we put something on the city website or something, that if you live in this area, there's been a change, you can do this, but you must come talk to somebody first.
Well, we did send a letter back out to everyone in that property, letting them know that it was approved and that if they don't have a carport and they're interested so, to build one, that they would need to come and visit with us about a permit. So we did that to that specific area.
Okay.
But I think your point's well taken just in general of if you're wanting to build a carport, please check.
For whatever reason, carports.
Carports have become a citywide thing of interest.
Yes.
Whether it's a fad or, you know, in a year from now it'll, it'll disappear, but for right now, carports are the thing to do.
Yes.
Because cars are so stinking expensive.
Yes, they are.
No argument at all. It'd be a really rough carport to put on that circular driveway. Because when I drove by over there, you know, that was the first thing that went through my head. I says, well, just, you know, build a fancy carport over your curved driveway. What's the issue? But structurally, that'd be a tough one.
Yeah. That's all we have for, for today, Chairman.
Thank you, Aaron. All right, item number seven, public comment. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the dice and begin, dis, dis dice, I'm blank today. And begin by stating their name and address or single member district number. Please limit all remarks to less than three minutes.
Anyone?
There being, there being, no, there being no public comment. We'll move on to item number eight. Next meeting agenda is the regular meeting zoning board adjustments is scheduled to begin at one thirty PM on Monday, May sixth, twenty twenty-four in the City Hall East Mezzanine Meeting Room. All motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Have we got cases pending already, Sheriff?